Welcome, everybody. We actually have a public hearing before the regular city council meeting tonight, so I'll call that public hearing to order. This has, this has to do with the ordinance to amend Chapter 11 of the Health and Sanitation Ordinance. It is 6:01 PM. In attendance, we have Mayor Brian Smith, Colin, and council members Colin Dykstra, Paul Hagan, Dimitri Martin, Paul Mayo, Corey Nagel, Eric Olson, Dave Peterson, Scott Porczalski, and Henry Velker. So we do have a quorum for the, we're actually at, we're at full force here for the public hearing. So before we start getting testimony, I will have Jared tell us the purpose of the meeting, or the hearing.
Thank you very much, Mayor. For reference, this agenda item starts on page 101 of your packets. This is ordinance number 1423. This is amending Chapter 11, the Health and Sanitation Code, so I will note that this came forward in a previous version during a previous council meeting, and it was within the building code section of our ordinance, Chapter 11, or I'm sorry, Chapter 14. You will now see it in Chapter 11. This was a recommendation made by both our attorney, as well as a, another Realtors Association that we met with was in agreeance that this was a good change, given our purpose for this code to have minimum standards of occupancy, which promotes the public health, safety, and welfare of our city. So by moving it to the Health and Sanitation Code, that is better achieving its purpose of the protection of health, safety, and welfare, and then the prevention of the creation of health nuisances. So very similar ordinance that had came forward before, just a different section, to better clarify the goals. There were some changes that we'll get to in the council meeting itself that were eliminated, or some sections that were eliminated from this after discussion with representative from the Realtors Association that came in to talk with us about this, with another individual that had some questions. So happy to take any questions about it now. Otherwise, I will bring it back to you, Mayor.
Yeah, there are no questions right now, though. This is just public hearing.
Oh, sorry.
So, you're okay. All right. So at this time, we will take testimony in favor of this ordinance change. Anybody that'd like to give testimony in favor of, please step up to the podium and give your name and address for the record. Limit your time at the podium to three minutes or less. Anybody that's in favor of this? Anybody in the audience that's in favor of that? If not, Jared?
I just wanted to read a memorandum that came into staff that was requested to be put in the packet for the public hearing, and that is from the Governmental Affairs Director for the Realtors Association of Northeast Wisconsin. They are the individuals we met with during that meeting. So I will just read it out loud quickly. The Realtors Association of Northeast Wisconsin supports the adoption of Chapter 111 Health and Sanitation Code as proposed. We had the opportunity to work with staff to ask questions and address some concerns, and we are supportive of the overall goals of the code. Our association's top priority is addressing the current housing crisis, especially the lack of quality affordable housing. We believe that maintaining our existing housing stock and reinvesting in our older neighborhoods is a critical element in providing an adequate supply of affordable housing in our communities. Therefore, we fully support the city's efforts to address blighted properties, as well as correcting maintenance violations in vulnerable neighborhoods. Like all important endeavors, the devil is in the details, and in this instance, the implementation of the code, our association looks forward to working with the city and staff to make sure that the requirements placed in the property owners are in keeping with the original intent of the city council. Thank you for taking our comments into consideration. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact us, and I believe their information's on their memorandum here, so.
All right. Jared, thank you for reading that. Any other testimony in favor of, any other testimony in favor of, we will take testimony in opposition. Is there any testimony in opposition to this ordinance change? Any testimony in opposition? Hearing none. I'll declare this hearing closed at 6:07 PM. Remember, we are going to have a discussion on this during the regular council meeting, too, which will start in just a second here. Okay. You ready, Barb? Okay. Welcome, everybody, to our regular city council meeting. Today is March 19, 2024, and it is 6:07 PM. I will call this city council meeting to order, and as always, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we'll have Barb take role for us. Oh, sorry. Or we'll have her read their open meeting statement first.
This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
All right. Can you take role now?
Sure. Mayor Smith?
Here.
Colin Dykstra?
Here.
Paul Hagan?
Here.
Dimitri Martin?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Corey Nagel?
Here.
Eric Olson?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Scott Porczalski?
Here.
Henry Velker?
Here.
Nine eyes, we have a quorum.
All right, and Barb, you want to start the introduction of the department heads, please?
Barb Noack, City Clerk.
Aaron Jensen, City Administrator.
Matt Clatt, Airport Manager.
Eric Bailey, Library Director.
Jared Kivala, Community and Economic Development.
Stephanie Reif, Finance Director.
Justin Behrens, Director of Public Works.
Laura Colbert, Parks and Rec Director.
Brian Hozell, Chief of Police.
And as always, Josh Warner is running the cameras in the back. He's our IT professional. Next up, we have the consent agenda. Barb tells me that there are no additions or deletions to that, so we would just be looking for a motion to approve unless you see something on there that you would like to see moved to the regular agenda where we would act on that individually.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, and second, I'm sorry, who was it, Colin, by Dykstra to approve the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried, regular agenda. Again, no additions to tonight's meeting, so we would just be looking to have a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Olson, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried, non-agenda items. We have announced, under announcements and correspondence, we have a proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month, designating April 24, 2024, as Denim Day, which is on page 87 of your packet. Audalina, right? Is that right? And you're here representing this proclamation, correct? Do you want to say something, or?
I didn't stand on it, but...
If you want to. Just step in front of the podium, so we can pull that microphone down, so we can hear you.
Sure. So I'm Audalina. I'm with the CAP Services Family Crisis Center. We serve victims of domestic violence and sexual assault for all of Wapaka County. As we're preparing for Sexual Assault Awareness Month, which is April, we realize that we have not done a proclamation in Wapaka County at all in, I think, it's been five years. So just kind of reached out to kind of bring it back, and five years ago, Wapaka was the only one. So now, this year, we have Wapaka, New London, and Clintonville also signing on for the proclamation, declaring April 24 as Denim Day. If you're not familiar, Denim Day is a way to bring awareness. There was a case, I believe it was in Italy, where someone was convicted of sexual assault, and that case was overturned because they said the young woman, her pants were tight. So they said there was no way she could be sexually assaulted because she had to have helped to get her pants off. So the person was not convicted. So trying to bring that awareness of, you know, not, everybody has a right to consent to their body, and Denim Day is just standing up against sexual assault and saying, you know, we want to bring awareness and, and prevent sexual assault from happening in our community. So as an advocate, we serve the community, both with the victims and also educating. So it's something that we try to get out there and do, and starting with bringing back the proclamation, and thank you so much for being willing to sign on to that. So really appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
For getting up and going. Okay, as I said, you can see the, the proclamation is on page 87. And I guess I'll go ahead and read that. Whereas in the United States, April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. SAAAM is an opportunity to raise public awareness about sexual violence and educate communities on how to prevent it. SAM calls attention to the fact that sexual harassment, assault, and abuse are widespread and can impact every person in the community. And whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment statistics show one in five women and one in 67 men will be raped at some point in their lives. Whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience sexual assault before age 18, whereas nearly one in 10 LGBTQ persons has experienced sexual assault, and half of transgender people experience sexual violence at some point of their lifetime. Whereas the national theme for this year's campaign, Building Connected Communities, the April's campaign calls on all individuals, communities, organizations, and institutions to ensure our communities are safe, inclusive, and equitable. Racism, sexism, classism, heterosexism, ageism, ableism, and other forms of oppression contribute to higher rates of sexual harassment, assault, and abuse. We must address all abuses of power to prevent sexual violence in our relationship communities and society. Whereas sustainable change can begin when we challenge societal norms and attitudes that promote a cultural of abuse and oppression. In order to ensure the next generations foster attitudes that promote respectful relationships, we call on all community members to pledge to reduce the stigma and dismantle victim blaming and promote respect for all genders. And whereas, we shall all increase awareness of victim advocacy services available through CAP Services Family Crisis Center, 24-hour free and confidential crisis line, and walk-in services for offering support, information, and accompaniment during law enforcement reports, medical exams, criminal proceedings, and throughout the healing process to all individuals impacted by sexual violence. And whereas, Wednesday, April 24, 24, year 2024, will be recognized as Denim Day in support of victims and survivors because what you wear is never an invitation for sexual assault. And whereas, CAP Services Family Crisis Center, the Wapaka County Coordinated Community Response Team, request public support and assistance as they continue to work towards society where all can be free from violence. Now therefore, it be resolved that I hereby join CAP Services Family Crisis Center and communities across the country in taking action to prevent sexual violence and proclaiming the month of April 2024 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and each of the year is an opportunity to create change for the future. All right. So again, thank you for attending tonight. Appreciate that. All right. Next up, we actually have public input. This is for anything that's a non-agenda item. Anybody that would like to speak to the council and staff on a non-agenda, non-agenda item, please step up to the podium again, and limit your time there to three minutes or less. Any public input?
Mayor Smith.
Yeah.
Henry. At the last month's council meeting, I kind of overlooked making a comment on the IT monthly report. I just wanted to highlight a quiet thing that sort of happened across our organization, where the IT department asked to basically go through a cybersecurity exercise, and we came out the other end of that, not perfect, but pretty good. And I think IT touches all our departments, and the fact that that was done, and correction's going to be addressed, and things of that nature, I think is really important to the well-functioning of our city. So I really appreciate Josh and his team doing that. And the other point I'd like to say is I understand his team is also trying to do the wiring and telecommunications in your building, Public Works Building, and I appreciate them tackling that. I'm sure that was a really high, heavy lift, but it's saving us a ton of money, I'm sure. So I want to thank them for doing that. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Henry. Thanks for the comment. Anybody else? Public input. Colin, go ahead.
More of an announcement. I noticed this month, well, actually, the last couple of months, the League of Wisconsin Municipalities is doing regional roundtables. There's one coming up. This is for elected officials, department heads, clerks in every city, town, city and village. There's one coming up April 10, and I don't know how to pronounce this. When I first moved back here, I called Plover wrong, and W-H-I-T-I-N-G. It's Stevens Point. But is it Whiting?
Whiting.
Whiting. It's at the Whiting Village Hall on Wednesday, April 10. Starts at 4:00 and goes to, well, adjourns at 7:30. One of the reasons I mention it is one of the education topics that they're proposing to talk about is maximizing existing housing with presenters from the USDA Office of Rural Development, WIDA, and AARP. So I think it's timely, at least that information is timely and warranted for our guys, if anybody's available and interested to go.
All right. Colin, thank you. Thank you for that information. Anybody else? Public input?
If anyone is interested, I will be attending, and if you want to carpool with me, you're more than welcome.
I think we, well, if you're going to carpool, but we do pay for mileage for them to go.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, if they want to go, but, okay. I don't know if I'd ride.
There's a light meal included, if that's important.
Yeah. I want to take somebody else's car. Okay. All right. Next up, Community Department Head Reports. Let's start with the Wapaka Area Arts and Cultural Network, and I see that we have Todd Jones in the audience. So Todd, you want to introduce yourself and?
Sure.
Tell us what's going on.
All right. Good evening. My name is Todd Jones. I am the chairperson for Wapaka King and In Between, affectionately known as Wiki, also an active member and partner to the Wapaka Area Arts and Culture Network, known as WACAN. Mr. Mayor, council members, and city administration, it's a pleasure to be with you again this evening. Today, I'm here to provide you an update since the last time I was here, prior to the new year kicking off, with a few updates on our activities and what's planned thus far in 2024. So to start, last time I was here, you may recall, we wrapped up the 2023 season with our Yuletide Celebration and Christmas Parade. Both were deemed a huge success, so thank you all who supported that and participated in the planning efforts. It took a village, indeed, but it was very well received. We had a better-than-expected turnout, excellent press and media coverage, and the community is already anxiously awaiting the 2024 event, which we'll begin planning for here in the weeks ahead, believe it or not. Also, since we last met, WACAN hosted their annual member summit at Par Four Resort, with a tremendous turnout. We had more than 80 attendees across a number of art-related organizations and business organizations, all there for an evening of collaboration, sharing, and networking on a multitude of topics. Those topics included marketing, cross-marketing, social media, and ways to leverage all of our local resources to promote each other's businesses and/or organizations. Now, this group will continue to meet throughout the year. Will host a series of topic-based sessions, as well as our quarterly sessions for all of our active members. And the reason we do this is through the networking with WACAN, it helps to bring together the many art-based organizations and business organizations, for each of them to better understand the opportunities to collaborate, opportunities to cross-promote, and really align in a greater strength to deliver better results. So with much potential through these two organizations, led by WACAN, and certainly partnered and supported by Wiki, this really assists us to build a healthy and arts-based local community. On the Wiki front, our busiest season has already begun. We kicked off the spring season, early spring season, I should say, with our first event of the year, the Vintage Shop Hop, which we held March 1 and 2. We had eight businesses here locally participating. That brought many folks from outside the area to our town. We have another shop hop planned for early fall, that's October 4th and 5th, and that will coincide with the many and a multitude of fall-specific events already planned for the season. I'd be remiss if I did not mention our now infamous 2024 Wiki maps are being finalized and in process of being printed for the new year. This year, we have 85 businesses represented on this particular map. This includes five new businesses to the local area as well, and more than 36 formal events between now and the end of 2024. These maps are given to customers as they come into businesses. They're distributed through city locations as well, and have really become a great asset for the community of the businesses and all of the participants. And last, but certainly not least, our downtown partnership meetings that are hosted by the city, Jared specifically, thank you, Jared, will begin again for 2024. Those sessions start on March 26, and will continue throughout the year. These meetings are critical to our ongoing success. They allow us to discuss and collaborate on a number of topics, come up with solutions in conjunction with the businesses and the city administration, and really assists us to improve the business climate and culture throughout Wapaka and the surrounding area. So in closing, thank you all for your continued support. Thank you for the assistance and collaboration for both Wiki and WACAN, and all of our businesses here locally, and we look forward to a very successful 2024 and a continued partnership with you all. That's it. Any questions?
Todd, thank you.
All right.
For coming tonight. Appreciate it. All right. Next up, under Department Ed Reports, our Department Ed Reports. And Matt, you want to go ahead and start?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. With the warmer, the normal February weather, the airport has been busier. Fuel sales were at record numbers, as well as the amount of daily flights. Our EA chapter held a ski planes in chilly event. There was a lot of planes, but not many ski planes. There was no snow. But it drew in about 350 people and 40 aircraft, and we also held a spot landing contest. It was a really good turnout, great day. We had our Jet A sensor replaced on our fuel farm. It malfunctioned and was no longer giving us any readings. We had our ash trees were removed, and the stumps were ground. We continue to work with the Bureau of Aeronautics, Westwood, on our T-hanger project, as well as our master plan project. And today, I was notified by the Bureau of Aeronautics that our traffic pattern change was approved. So we will no longer, as of May 16, our flights will avoid the north side of the airport over the houses. It'll all be shifted to the south side, south of 10. So that'll cut down on the noise complaints, and if an incident were to happen, it wouldn't be over residential area. Other than that, we continue to do our Thursday morning coffee and donuts and pancakes now. Yeah.
I didn't hear about the pancakes.
Yes, pancakes and sausage.
All right.
And we have our spring potluck on Thursday. So if anybody's available, 11 o'clock, we're having a potluck.
Great. Thanks, man. Anybody have any questions or comments for Matt? Go ahead, Colin.
I think if I'm not mistaken, the change in the traffic pattern puts it to the standard traffic pattern of all airports. It should increase safety as well.
Yes.
Okay. So.
Anybody else? Any other comments? Thanks, Colin, for bringing that up. Eric, let's talk about the library.
Excellent. My favorite subject. Okay, so the library report starts on page 10 of your packet. Some highlights from the last month. Wednesday, March 6, we had Officer Wasrada of the Wapaka Police Department joining us for our monthly luncheon learn. We had 38 community members in attendance to learn about the police department's new drone, which was really cool, culminated with a test flight in the library city hall parking lot. Luncheon learn is definitely one of our most successful programs. It is generously sponsored by Synergy. We're getting some new chairs through three memorial donations that we had received over the last year. It's a much-needed refresher for one of our main seating areas, the one right next to the periodicals and newspapers. Had a staff in service on March 12. We do a one-day in-service once a year. Staff travel to Little Shu Public Library for day of discussion and continuing education. Topics range from job center services, new hiring, new hire onboarding, diversity in picture book collections, and more. Quick update on hiring for our openings, for our two full-time positions. Kind of clipping along with the interim period, we did close the posting period for head of adult services position on March 1. We received seven very solid applications. Interviews have been scheduled for March 21 and 22. Once we have the head of adult services position filled, then we'll be able to crunch the numbers and see how soon we can get the head of youth services position filled. So fingers crossed. If we're fortunate, we might be able to have both of them filled before summer. So we'll see. Passports continue to be a fantastic new service, continue to be ever-busier with folks coming in for that service. If you happen to need to get or renew a passport, please consider stopping by the library. Thus far, since the start of the year, we've brought in $1,680 in revenue, which puts us on course to clear $8,000, well above our goal for the year. And if traffic continues to increase, we've got a reasonable shot at $10,000 in new revenue for 2024, which is exciting. Business resources at the library. We have a growing number of remote workers, entrepreneurs, vacationers, et cetera, who use the library for work, meetings, and more. These are workers who have recognized the resources that the library has, and to, in recognition of this new type of library user that we've had increasingly coming in post-pandemic, we've added office supplies and materials as well. That's made possible through a grant from Office Outfitters, and will be increasingly advertising the resources that we have to folks seeking a location to quietly or in a meeting do some business. So that is the update and everything happening at the library. Well, the biggest thing's happening at the library. And obviously, we have the Wax Museum event that occurred last, just this evening. Always one of our busiest, busiest evenings of the year, so I hope that some of you had a chance to pop over and see all the presentations the kiddos were doing. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Any questions or comments for Eric? All right. Thank you. Jared?
Thank you very much, Mayor. My report starts on page 24 of your packets. Continue to get quite a large influx of permits coming in. My... I know we had some colder weather coming up here soon, but the really nice weather over the past couple of weeks gave a lot of people very, very much spring fever. So a lot of accessory structures, decks, a lot of permits to review have come in, which is great to see. People are still looking to do projects. As Todd had mentioned in his report, our downtown partnership is starting back up for 2024. Our first meeting is March twenty-sixth, and then our next planned meeting is May fourteenth. Those will both be at seven-thirty, and we'll be in the lower-level library meeting rooms. If anybody would like to be added to the email list, let me know. Agendas for those usually go out a week or so prior to the event, or the week prior, I guess. Development updates, two-two-three Division Street. Talked with the developer, they are still looking to start hopefully in April. They were hopeful for May, they're still waiting on some state-reviewed plans to come back in, so they're at the mercy of those, but are hopeful that the foundation will at least come back in April and they can get an early start permit to start the foundation. Let's see, other ones. The Lori Way Apartments. Let me see, I probably should have moved that one, besides the point. Lori Way Apartments, those are the forty-five units cottage-style apartments that were approved recently. Those are coming in in the form of building permits, and they are hoping to start in April as well. We've had four new single-family homes come in, which is great to see. One has been approved officially, the other three are in the works, just figuring out some final details and the permitting process. Reloading and wayfinding signage continues. Staff has been working on that and working with the different representatives involved to keep that going. Code revisions, we are looking at quite a few in the lineup, of course, you know, not all of these are going to come forward at once. Not on this, we are continuing our movie planning, so working with the library, Parks and Rec, and the Community Economic Development Department to plan, and airport, sorry, Matt, to plan some movies for the summer. Looking to get those planned and finalized and start marketing those. Our first one will be in June. We're also looking and trying to get a spring cleanup event going, where the city would sponsor some dumpsters, front loader, things like that. People can come to the recycling center, hopefully drop off maybe some items they're having difficulty getting rid of, and the city can assist on a two-day event with that. But yeah, besides that, staff is just continuing to work with the developments and inquiries that are coming in and reaching out to other property owners to see if we can get more.
Awesome. Yeah, thanks, Jared. Any questions, comments? For Jared? Let's move over to finance. Stephanie?
Thank you. I may sound redundant. Again, talking about the audit, the auditors are currently on-site. They were here Monday, they'll be here through tomorrow. It's been going really great. Still a lot of learning as we go through the process, but they are a fantastic team to work with. They have taught us so much. We've taught them some things, so it's just been really good to work with them. That's basically it.
Thanks, Todd. Questions, comments for Steph? Go over to Public Works, Justin?
Thank you, Mayor. My report can be seen on page twenty-eight to thirty-two of the packet, usual starting in wastewater. Probably hit on all these because we've been focusing a lot on that. First of all, our basin engineer through the DNR has retired. We have an interim, and that does affect our current permit, which is up for renewal right now. Not so much in a negative way for us, it just may delay a renewal of our next new permit. So it's just something we'll have to work through as we usually communicate with this person on a monthly to every-other-month basis. Utility Board approved a purchase, a purchase, excuse me, of a forklift in the, at the wastewater treatment plant. The dollar amount was thirteen-thousand-five-hundred dollars. According to our procurement policy, that did not require council approval, but just notification of that to common council. So here it is. It's the first time I get to do that. We have a bid opening on Thursday, that's for our Airport Sewer Extension Project. Our lift station bid opening came out positive, so we're hoping, fingers crossed, this does the same. And with that, we're probably bringing that back in early April to both Utility Board and to this floor, for final approvals of that project, of course. Streetside, we received our second and final delivery of salt for, I guess, the season. Over the last few years, with the salt shed, the newly constructed one, we've been trying to slowly build it up. The weather has allowed us to do that, and now with that, so we're hoping future budgets, we can be a little softer on weather pending, and looking at other ways to conserve our salt. It is one of our bigger expenses within the street department, so that should be a positive moving into the next couple of years. Water utility, we have a note in our monthly newsletter going out, asking the public for help. People know what a water meter looks like, to take a picture of it, or more so the pipe that leads into their house. This is a new requirement by DNR to update inventories, not just Wapaka, it's every water utility. And it's, again, like, we have inventory of our laterals, when we built it, when the infrastructure and the road. And this is just an extra layer of insurance to make sure that what our notes show add or match what is in the houses. It does boil down to the lead and copper ruling. The type of material does come into play as far as defining if it could be a lead line, a galvanized line, or a copper line, or plastic, of course. So that is out there. Simply take a picture and email it to water@cityofwapaka.org to give us a hand on that. Otherwise, water operators, when they are doing their house calls, will also do this. So it's completely voluntary, not mandatory at all. Facility side, if you've been in City Hall lately, there is a new office that's being built. That's for our grant writer, Greg. It's in the back corner here in our back conference, so that is going up. New facility, we are putting the finishing touches on. We did do a walkthrough, so we have a punch list. We are trying to make sure everything is complete on the inside, so we can get final inspection done by the billing inspector and then get occupancy permit by early April. Final dirt work on the outside started up coincidentally today, and the asphalt crew did not show up, but the foreman did to look at it and do some additional measuring. So it is coming right around the corner. And then finally, we had our twenty-sixth Annual Public Works Chili Cook-Off. We had high attendance as people, but low submittals of chilis. However, it was still a great event, and Barb Nowak beat us all pretty handily, and it was a great event regardless. And I guess next year, we'll hopefully see a few more faces from other persons there, so. One final note, I do have a middle-school band concert to go to at seven o'clock, so I will be excusing myself here in just a few minutes, so. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Justin. Questions, comments? All right, let's go to Parks and Rec, Laura.
Thank you. All right, so an update on Lakeman Field. They have the bases installed for the lights, and the lights themselves will be put in in April, and we're hoping to have a grand opening to coincide with the beginning of the Lakeman season sometime thereafter, so stay tuned for that. We are continuing to do River Ridge Trail promotion, so in March, we, Sneaky Little Leprechaun, hit sixteen leprechauns in collaboration with the library out at Shambow Park and Shambow Hill, and families had an opportunity to go out there and use the QR code or just go and look for them. We are looking at a different management system for Parks and Rec, so moving away from active net potentially. And Leslie and I have had a chance to vet two other systems, and they are remarkable and will not only save us ample time in setting up programs and going through reservations, but also will hopefully save the city money. So we're going to continue the process with IT and Finance, and hopefully sometime in April or May, I will let you know what the outcome is with that. We are extremely happy to report that we have an accepted conditional offer for the administrative assistant position, and that person contingent on the Parks and Rec Board meeting on the fourth, they will start April fifth. And we're thrilled about that. I can't imagine having this gap without Andrea and Leslie, they've been wonderful to work with, and the collaboration within the office has been really great. But we're really excited to have somebody in there to help carry the load. Our registrations are open, and things are filling up super fast. We've never had playground program and after-summer school adventure fill up within the first week, and that's what happened this year. So they're definitely getting a reputation behind them. As far as parks is concerned, I know we all know it's been a really, really wonderful winter as far as getting out there and doing work. So Josh had had a chance to not only keep cutting down trees that were dead and potentially in the way of landing on trails or roadways. He worked with the Public Works Crew to get some cemetery trees down over Lake Shore Drive, so that was a good collaboration. He's also been wrapping trees for deer. And then, we have been working a lot on our River Ridge Trail maintenance. So if you haven't been out to Swan Park or Grass Lake, and even part of the trail out by Gusmer, he's been able to lay some limestone, take away some of the erosion issues we've had. So the trail maintenance has looked, has gone really well so far in 2024. In fact, he's, I think, knocked everything off 2024's list, to-do list, and already started on 2025 because of the winter we've had. So it's been great. Please note that another major event on March twenty-sixth, besides the downtown meeting, we're going to close Brainerd's Bridge Park because DNR is going to start their project there, where they are going to restore the islands, they're going to add trout habitat, they're going to do some tree and native plant planting, and reroute the river slightly so that it mitigates some of that future erosion. So they have a plan, all the permits are in place, and again, that park will be closed until further notice for safety reasons. Hopefully, opening back up by May first, when all the parks open up for the season. And then, just please note that our registration deadlines for youth baseball, softball, and Babe Ruth are on the twenty-fifth, and we're starting our next session of fitness classes, actually on Easter. That one is already filled, believe it or not, but then the rest start up on April first and following that week. So if you want to get active, check those out. We are discounting the prices slightly, too.
Thanks, Laura. Any questions, comments for Laura? All right, Chief Hozell?
Thank you, Mayor. My report can be found on page thirty-six. The warm weather, we continue to be busy. We had seven-hundred-and-eleven calls for service. Our criminal cases to the District Attorney's Office were up a little bit, we had twenty-three referrals, nine juvenile arrests. And our traffic was up a little bit, one-hundred-and-thirty-five traffic stops, they had one-hundred-and-twenty-nine citations and one-hundred-and-thirty-nine warnings. With the warmer weather, we were going to start doing some directed patrols in the downtown area, because I know we always get loud stereo complaints and everything else, but I guess spring came back and we got some cold weather, so I don't anticipate people driving around in their, in their cars with their windows down too much. But some of the trainings that we did this last month is, the officers went out to the high school to do active shooter training, and what they worked on was clearing, hallway clearing, room clearing, stairwell clearing, and entry as to how they're going to get into the building. They also did some live firing simulation training. So what that means is there's, there's special guns in that, or the bullets that they use, that they actually shoot at the officers when they're coming into the building or in their different areas, and it does sting. If you get hit with that, it's like getting hit probably with a paintball shot. And that's to heighten their awareness as to where they're vulnerable and everything else, and to put more stress on the officers. So when they respond, fortunately, that we never have that happen here, but if they ever respond, they know what they're going to be in for. So that was an all-day training that we did countywide, and we had different officers from the Sheriff's Department, we trained with them. So it's really important that we do those trainings and that we keep up with that. And then, we did do a training at Fox Valley Tech last week with the rifle training. So again, it's important stuff that we do. Speaking of guns, our life cycle is coming up on our forty-caliber handguns that we have. Usually, you can get ten to twelve years out of those. The springs start to go bad and everything else, and the maintenance on them, the maintenance on those guns is probably about a hundred-and-fifty dollars per gun. That doesn't include any armor time, where it takes somebody about two hours to go through those guns and fix them. The officers approached me and we talked at length as to, you know, different options we have. One of the things that we decided to do as a department was to switch to nine-millimeter handguns. They're a little bit smaller, so that they're going to fit officers' hands better. What that improves is it improves accuracy, and we're also able to carry two more rounds or two more bullets in each gun, so it gives us a little bit more capacity. And then, the other thing that we talked about putting on the guns is holographic sights. So right now, when, when we train, because our sights are open, we're looking at the gun, then we're looking at the target. With going to the sights, just like, you know, deer hunting or whatever, you're going to be looking at the target first, and as soon as you bring it up, it'll be like a red-dot sight where you'll be able to see where that round is going. So by doing this, the project came to about sixteen-thousand dollars. However, over the last few years, we've done quite a bit of fundraising for the police department, and we're able to cover all those costs through our fundraising and the trade-in of our own weapons. We're able to reduce that cost probably to about eleven-thousand-six-hundred, eleven-thousand-seven-hundred dollars. So we have enough money to make that transition of getting brand-new guns, getting sights and the holsters, all with the donation money that the officers have done over the last few years, so there won't be a budget impact for that. So it's, just shows you what we can do with the fundraising money. And then, the last thing is, we've been working with, with Greg, our grant writer upstairs for AEDs, a couple new ones for the department. He's going to write a grant for us. We're kind of getting at the end of the life cycle for a few of those, and we want to be proactive and get our AEDs updated so that they can be integrated or used by our ambulance service. Right now, the ones that we have, if we have pads on a person, they actually have to take the pads off because our pads don't work in their machines. So the new ones that we'd be getting, the Gold Cross would be able to pull up, they'd be able to hook into the pads that we have, and then they, they would be able to continue with their lifesaving efforts. So that's all that I have for the police department, unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Go to IT, Josh?
First thing, we've got Electronics Recycling scheduled for Friday, April twenty-sixth, from ten-thirty to one at Swan Park. For the theme of the nice weather we've been having, Wapaka Online was able to take advantage of that. I believe they are completely moved over to the new tower behind City Hall. We saw some nice improvements going over to the Shambow Tower for our signals, and that's because we've now overcome the trees and the line-of-sight issues, so that worked out really well. And then the other theme you heard is the Public Works Building, and some weeks I lose what, track of what day is what because there's so much going on with that project. Still a lot of moving parts to get that finished up, but again, they're slowly, they've got new computers this year, all the phone stuff, coordinating phone line changes with AT&amp;T and Spectrum. Still a couple doors, cameras, and a few more jacks to put in over there, and some of that's just contingent on how fast other contractors are moving on getting their stuff done, and sounds like another two, three weeks, and all be done, hopefully. So that's all I've got.
All right. Thanks, Josh. Any questions, comments for Josh? All right, let's go to the Clerk's Office. Bart?
Thank you. My report is on page forty-five. Lori Miller, the new deputy clerk, started a couple weeks ago, and she is in full election mode. She's been taking training, she had to take a nine-hour training, it was a webinar training, to get access to the WISVOT system. Thank you. My report is on page 45. Lori Miller, the new deputy clerk, started a couple weeks ago, and she is in full election mode. She's been taking training. She had to take a nine-hour training. It was a webinar training to get access to the WIS vote system so she can make changes, register people and things like that. And then she continues taking webinars as time allows to get better, to better understand the election process. On March 6th, we held a training for all the election workers. We had about 17, I think, in attendance. Roy and Claudette, the chief inspectors, led the training. And then we had the Badger Books set up down here so they could kind of do a refresher on the Badger Books. And then we have another training set for this Friday for some that could not attend on the 6th of March. And on March 12th, we mailed out the ballots for the absentees, requests that we had on file. So we mailed out about 200 absentee ballots. And nursing home voting is scheduled for March 20th and March 22nd. We have about 80 requests on file for, between the three of them. And the pre and public test for the voting machines is scheduled for the 25th and the 27th at the Recreation Center. And in-office voting started today, and we, we had six people today. I wasn't sure how many to expect because people have been trying to come in for the last couple of weeks. So to date, with all of the absentees that we sent out, we have about 300 absentee ballots that we have issued to either mailing out or to the nursing homes. And that's pretty much it.
Thanks, Barb.
Yep.
Questions, comments for Barb? All right, Erin, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Council members, my report can be found on page 46 of your packets. I'm just gonna touch on a few of the things. I wanted to touch on the review of the local roads improvement applications. I was fortunate enough to sit on a state committee. The announcements of those awards, we did make recommendations. It has to go through one more level. I won't divulge the, the results of those recommendations, but I can speak to the fact that I went through 133 applications and our staff, Justin, the development review team, Greg, they put the city of Wapakka in a great position to have a chance of funding. So it is a credit to not only staff, but also city council, because there are things that kind of push, that are taken into consideration, like comprehensive planning and the documents that you guys, I know we, we talk about having a lot of documents on the shelves and a lot of plans, but that stuff does make a difference in these applications, and it does position us for those types of programs. So good work for everyone on that. Expecting probably an announcement on that in either April or July. It depends on which funding cycle, some of the, some of projects get announced later, some get announced sooner. So we'll see what happens if we are announced. Next, upgrade on the bond rating. This was great news. Probably came a year earlier than we were expecting, but it's fantastic. We, the city was able to move their GO bond rating from a A-plus to a double A-minus for the general obligation debt. S&amp;P does those ratings, and I'm just gonna summarize a couple of the reasons. A growing tax base spurred by the residential development within River North, an improved economy with equalized values increasing 12% from the previous year, consistent budgetary performance, good financial, good financial management assessment and strong fund balances, weak debt, the weak debt and liability profile is improving with debt being repaid at a rapid pace. And then the low pension and other employment benefit costs, low employee liability after they exit as employees. So those are just some of the things that were bullet pointed. You know, we thought maybe we had a shot at it a year from now. We thought it might take some of that River North development to start being executed to have our, our upgrade, but they were willing to give it to us with those other considerations. So that will help. I guess the other thing, I don't think I shared in my newsletter, but we did come in substantially under. We did have the closing for our bonds in both the sewer and the GO bonds, and we came in about .75 points below what we were projecting in both. So for interest rates, for both. So that was great news. I'll share those in my next newsletter, exactly what those were. Next, we do have, many of you probably know the Wisconsin Act 94 was signed by Governor Evers and the redistricting maps. We do have a new state senator. So we've seen Joan Ballwig a decent amount lately. We no longer will have Joan. We will have Senator Rachel Cabral-Guavera, who is the senator for the 19th Senate District in the state. I haven't had a chance to meet her yet, but we're, we're working on it right now. We're working on setting up a meeting hopefully within next month to tell her a little bit about Wapakka and, and learn a little more about her. Fire protection fees, I've thrown this in a couple of recent reports, but I just wanted to remind everyone that the fire protection fees, they are changed in this March billing for the water utility. They increased, and this is a result of the revaluation. As a reminder, we were gonna talk about raising the actual rates through a simplified rate case in our budget process. When we, when we got to the point where we realized that those, the revaluation had the impact it did on the fire protection fees for the water utility, we pulled back what was in our control, which was the simplified rate case, and we put that off for another year. So credit council for that. Again, the fire protection fees are out of our control as it's set by the PSC or Public Service Commission, and it is tied to the, the value per thousand on properties. Any questions that you get as council members or that you have, feel free to set a meeting with me at any time. The only other thing, it's city-related certainly, but also fire commission-related. We do expect to post a fire chief position in April, and we'll see how that goes. Hopefully, if everything stays on track, it would result in some interviews in May and, and work towards the fire department's first full-time position in the history of the department. So look forward to working with the commissioners on that. That's all I have.
Thanks, Erin. Any questions, comments, Erin? All right, let's get back to the agenda then. We have unfinished business. We have ordinance number 052024. This is an ordinance amending chapter 12.27, providing for the regulation of mobile food establishments. Jared, you wanna just lead us down this path here?
Of course. So this one starts on page 88 of your packet. The red line can be found on page 92 of your packet. So this is the second reading. Background on this one, so staff last year worked on a couple of different events, the movies being one specifically, where we attempted to get food trucks to come to the city, be at those events, just kind of really add to the, the overall ambiance and what we're trying to accomplish by getting people out into the community, into maybe places that they really haven't been, airport, downtown, things like that. And by offering food, trying to draw just more crowds to these areas, increase visibility, while still respecting the, you know, obviously the distances we have within this code from restaurants. So upon doing that, we got a lot of feedback from different food trucks that would have had to come from outside the area. You know, some of them driving from Appleton, Green Bay, Oshkosh, Stevens Point, Wausau, Wisconsin Rapids. We don't have too many in our immediate area, and many of them gave us comments that, you know, really restrictive rules, didn't really seem like we wanted them there. And if they were gonna have to drive that significant distance, you know, they, like as anyone would, they would want to feel a little more welcome. So staff took the time, clerks, Parks and Rec, CED, to go through the code and try to change it a bit whilst, you know, still respecting the main elements that I think really people wanted in here in the beginning, like the distance from restaurants, but just trying to lighten it up a little bit, making sure that those food trucks do feel welcome for, when we're looking to have them for special events, and just in the city in general. So you can see many of the changes with the red line. I'm happy to take any questions. I did check with Laura, think yesterday, actually, no, no comments came to her about this. I did not receive any public comments. Barb, I don't know if you received any. I did receive a comment from one of the food trucks that I had reached out to for this year's movie series, and they kind of gave us a similar explanation as last year. I kind of told them some of the changes that we're looking to make, and they were very receptive of what we were looking to propose. So did have a positive comment from them.
Thanks, Jared. Any questions from Jared? Again, this is the second reading, so if you choose, we can go ahead and make a motion to approve this ordinance change. Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance, ordinance 052024 in reference to changes in regulation of food trucks in the city of Wapakka.
Second?
Thank you, Henry. Motion by Velicker, second by Martin, that we approve of ordinance number 052024. Any further discussion? Barbara, call the roll.
A question?
Oh, I'm sorry, Paul. Go ahead.
Is the $50 fee, is, is it, I guess, is it compatible with, with other communities? Is it, where does it fall, I guess, is what I'm asking?
Yeah, so from that same food truck that I reached out to, you know, they had some, provided some comments before I told them that we're looking at a revision. And they had said that city of Marshfield is $25, and city of Stevens Point is 50. So we are in line with other nearby communities that would have this. And also, we, for like civic events, that would not count because they're one-time civic events. So we would waive the fee for one-time civic events kind of deal. So for, if we would have one at a movie, you know, one night, the, the fee would be waived.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Questions? Barbara, call the roll?
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, Jared. Next up, new business. We have a request from Mike Strick, HH Heinder Brewing Company, to expand outdoor service area for HH Heinder Head Butt Homebrew Competition on Saturday, April 27th, 2024, from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Mike is actually in the audience tonight. So Mike, I don't know if you have anything you want to say. If so, just use the microphone, if you would, please.
Sure. Hi, everybody. This is our third year. We do this homebrew competition. We call it the Head Butt because, of course, we have to have fun names. First year, we had 50, we put it out to 50 openings. It filled right away. Last year was 75, filled right away. This year, we went to 85. It filled within a week again. So we need the expanded area. The first year, we were lucky enough that it was nice outside, and we did it in the beer garden. But we don't want to take that chance, and 810 building will not be close enough to try to use that. So I put it in the tent, just put heaters in there. We play some music in between things. There's quite a few rounds of judging. We get professional registered beer judges to judge people's beer and give them input about it. And then also, they get a two-hour period to serve some of their beer in sample glasses and talk about it with the patrons, and then they can vote on it for the people's choice, which they all really enjoy, and it's a big part of the event. And pretty much wraps up what we do is our final judging for the final two or three beers onstage with the judges, and then they talk about each beer. It, it's a pretty interesting thing, and the, the beer brewers, the home brewers, really, really get a kick out of it. So it's become a big event for us.
Thanks. Thanks, Mike. Anybody have any questions? Kind of an interesting job to have, huh? So we would, if you're okay with this, he's looking to expand his, his liquor license for that date. So we would just need a motion to approve this.
Move to approve?
Second.
Hagan? Right. Motion by Hagan, second by, I'm sorry, Colin Dijkstra, that we approve the request from HH Heinder Brewing. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Again, say no. Motion carried. All right, Mike, good luck.
Thank you all.
All right, next up, we have World Hemophilia Day Campaign, Light It Up Red Awareness Campaign. And this is set for April 17th, 2024. And I see that we have two individuals in the audience, and I'm assuming you are Heather and Erica. Okay, all right. Come on up, step next to the podium there.
Thank you, Mr. Ray, and thank you to the council for giving us a couple of minutes of your time today. So my name is Erica Brock. I am the Business Operations Manager at the Hemophilia Outreach Center in Green Bay. We are one of four hemophilia treatment centers that are federally recognized in the state of Wisconsin. So we service individuals with bleeding disorders. We have approximately 400 patients in northeastern and central Wisconsin. So we service 25 counties in that area, including the Upper Peninsula of Michigan. So just a very high-level explanation of bleeding disorders is folks are missing a clotting protein. So it's not like when they get a paper cut, they're squirting blood all over the place. They're just going to bleed longer. So they're not bleeding faster, they're bleeding longer. This is a lifelong condition. There's no cure. It is genetically inherited, and it's very expensive. So folks perform better when they belong to a treatment center, much like other rare chronic diseases. So when folks come to the clinic, they are seeing a hematologist, they're seeing a nurse, they're seeing a genetic counselor, they're seeing a dental hygienist, because again, with oral bleeding, they're seeing a physical therapist, they're seeing behavioral health. So when folks come in annually, they see the hematologist, pay a very small fee, and then they have access to those services throughout the rest of the year. It's a really brilliant care model. So the CDC did some research showing that patients who belong to a hemophilia treatment center, they have 40% less likely to die from their bleeding disorder and 40% less likely to become hospitalized. So what? Why am I sharing this with you? So the World Federation of Hemophilia designed a campaign called Light It Up Red World Hemophilia Day on April 17th. And the goal of that is to light up as many local landmarks as possible to identify folks in the area that have a bleeding disorder. So for one diagnosis in particular, Von Willebrand's Disorder, it takes an average of 16 years to obtain a diagnosis, just because the bleeding patterns are so sporadic. Again, rare chronic diseases, it's not always first of mind when it comes to that. So again, we, we, our goal as a center is to light up something in every county that we serve. So as you can see, there's Appleton, Nina, Minasha, Oshkosh, Green Bay, Wausau, and we would love it if the city of Wapakka would join us in our initiative to raise awareness for this here. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to take them, but thanks for listening to my long-winded speech.
Well, thank you for coming tonight. Our plan is, and Barb kind of reminded me of this today, too, is our plan is to light up Main Street with the lights that we have on Main Street, and we'll have those turn red on April 17th. If there's anybody else in the community that would like to join in on that and has the ability to put up those lights that are similar to that, just let us know. But we plan on doing it all the way down Main Street. I don't know if you've seen our, our colored lights that we have, but it will look pretty special.
Oh, awesome. And we will send folks down and take pictures. And again, we have individuals all over the state of Wisconsin that we will let them know which monuments plan to be lit up so that folks can go take a walk wherever they are and really celebrate if they know they have a bleeding disorder. Again, just enjoy it. So thank you so much for your support. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. Anybody else? Any questions, comments? All right, let's, let's just, if you don't mind, let's make a motion.
Motion to light our downtown lights red on April 17th in honor of this campaign.
Second?
Motion by Dijkstra, second by Olson, that we approve of this event on April 17th, 2024. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Again, say no. Motion carried. Thank you. Thanks for attending. All right, next up, we have license report number... All right, next up, we have license report number sixteen sixty-eight, this is a Class A intoxicating liquor license and a Class A fermented malt beverage license for Wauwaka Gas LLC, used to be Wauwaka Marathon, and then it, you know, before that, it was the Holiday Station, next to the Dairy Queen there, and so it's the same agent, they just have different owners there, and just for those of you that don't understand, Class A licenses just means that they they purchase to carry out, they cannot consume alcohol on-premise, so it would just be like a liquor store type thing, which is what they have there. Okay, so we're just looking for a motion to approve the, giving this license to a new owner with the same agent.
Move to approve, license number sixteen sixty-eight.
Motion by Peterson?
Second.
Second by Porczatsky, that we approve license report number sixteen sixty-eight. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. All right, next up, we have ordinance number fourteen, twenty twenty-three, this is an ordinance amending chapter eleven, the City of Wauwaka Health and Sanitation Code, and as Jared said in the public hearing, this is the first reading, although we've had three first readings already, but, or this will be our third first reading, but again, we're not anticipating that we will vote on this tonight, but we want to make sure that you have the opportunity to to speak on it. So Jared, you want to?
Of course, Mayor, thank you. This one starts on page one oh one of your packets. Again, as the mayor mentioned, this is the first reading, we wanted to bring it back through the whole process, we did not bring it to Plan Commission, but we felt as enough comments came in from the public, from the council, and then, of course, the Plan Commission did see the original version, so we felt as though we had enough comments to make revisions, make the necessary changes per also our attorney comments, and bring it back to you in another ordinance format and for our first hearing, our first reading again in public hearing. So as mentioned in the public hearing, this did change chapters, so per a recommendation from the attorney, this changed from chapter fourteen in the building code to chapter eleven, as it was felt that the true health, or that the true intent of the code was in regards to health and sanitation, as it is the public health, safety, and welfare by eliminating health nuisances. So a lot of it hasn't changed, I will note the changes, the red line does start on page one oh five, I will also note, the red line got very convoluted by the multitude of changes, so some of these are not specifically highlighted, but I will just call them out. So in section eleven point oh two, one, five, there was a change, it did say adequate garbage storage containers and garbage facilities, that garbage facilities was removed, that was a recommendation that we we did take and change. Continuing to go down, in section one, six, the temperature was changed from one-twenty to how it more reads in the state code, and it's one-ten at the plumbing fixture. Continuing down, in section one, B, six, six was removed, that was in regards to screens, there were many comments about the screens, and after review of those comments, and really the purpose of the overall ordinance, staff felt it best just to remove that at this time, still noting that there's an importance to them, but at this time, you know, for the overall purpose of the ordinance, that can always be reevaluated. Continuing down, section E, two, that was relating to walkthrough, so evaluating, again, that section in regards to the health and sanitation code, felt as though it would be best just to remove that, as there also were very few enforcement cases where that would actually stand, as most of it would take over just in the building code itself. The final item is a section F, number four, it was requested, it was brought forward, Shano's Code and how theirs read, and giving different responsibilities to both the owner and the occupant, so staff made that change, and pretty well changed it to kind of how Shano's reads, based on that recommendation. So those are the noted changes, again, happy to take any questions, first reading, so happy to take questions after, we can talk about it outside the council meeting or now as well, so whatever is desired.
All right, thanks, Jared. Comments? Paul, go ahead.
I just had a question as far as the water heater. So if a person has a water, a hot water tank instead that is heated by a boiler system, would the boiler system be considered the hot water heater? Because technically, I don't have a hot water heater in my house, my hot water's heated by my boiler.
By the boiler, I would say yes, that would count as your hot water heating facility, whatever, whatever that would be, and then the one-ten at the fixture would still be the requirement, and that's based off of just research for the temperature in which bacteria grows, which is anything pretty well less than one-ten.
All right, other comment? Dimitri, go ahead.
So part of my confusion before was that...
Dimitri, can you pull your microphone?
Yeah, part of my objection and and confusion before was, I didn't understand how we would be enforcing it, I didn't want to see us kicking people out of their homes, but I see now that it talks about the, you know, what happens if someone violates the order, they're subject to section twenty-five point oh four in the code, and I was just looking at that, and I see that for the first offense, there would be a penalty of not less than five dollars and not more than two hundred dollars. How is the actual dollar amount within that range determined? Is it on a case-by-case basis, or?
It's a case-by-case basis. I would say that's probably the best way to describe it, is a case-by-case basis, it's usually, in that, it's usually the higher amount, just because of the amount of staff time it takes to write those citations, to go through that process, you know, it does, you end up tacking on the court costs, and there's different fees that end up getting tacked onto that, so it does end up being really more of the higher amount.
It's going to be about two hundred dollars.
Yes. And I will note, you know, there is a discussion as well that I was going to bring back, there is a first offense, second offense, third offense, and really, the first offense and second offense are the same amounts, and so there's going to be a discussion brought back to the different, to Plan Commission and eventually council, to see if those would ever want to be raised, or if we want to keep them at two hundred. Also, a comment that I forgot to mention, so I apologize, you had also mentioned about definitions, so staff did not work on any additional material for this ordinance quite yet, just because we're unsure of what the council wants to do with it, but if, if passed in the second reading, or whenever it's passed, staff would at that point work on a definitions section to better define some of these terms within this ordinance, and there'd also be some other clarifying sections that would be added, so I just wanted to, I know you commented about definitions in the past as well.
Yeah, you kind of preempted my next point, so that's, that's, that's good, but maybe I'll just, for the sake of it being read into the public record, just comment that, you know, according to chapter SPS in this, in the state code, three twenty dot zero seven thirty-two, it defines habitable room as any room used for sleeping, living, or dining purposes, excluding such enclosed places as kitchens, closets, pantries, bathrooms, and so forth, so basically, sleeping, living, and dining purposes. And, yeah, so I guess most of it kind of works for that.
Thank you, Dimitri. Jared, thanks for explaining that. Go ahead, Colin.
Yeah, at first, I'd like to thank the council and the mayor especially for taking the time to to review this again, everybody had a hard vote, I guess, the last time, and I thank everybody for their their open-mindedness. I also looked up with Dimitri, the penalty provisions in this this aspect, and I was a little bit concerned as you look down into the twenty-five point oh four dash three, each violation, and each day a violation occurs shall constitute a separate offense, so in my reading, that that would mean it would be, well, whatever the forfeit or the number is, some number between five and two hundred dollars per day, and I'd ask for some clarification on that before our next meeting. And then, as an anecdote, and a thank you also for pulling the the screens requirement, in my personal life, I helped manage some properties, and quite literally, this last week, I had somebody who runs a farm in Nukusa, who is looking for places for her employees to stay, and she came to Watoma to look for a place because they had a screen ordinance in that area that they thought was a little bit, well, overly zealously enforced, and I think we have to be very careful, my point of bringing that up is to say we have to be careful with our ordinances, so that we don't get people leaving our community to go to others to find rental communities. So anyway, that's, that's my point tonight.
Thanks, Colin. Yeah, appreciate the comments on the screens, too, they're, it's not in the ordinance, but it's certainly going to be highly recommended that windows have screens in them, you know, as as they go out to these places. Any other, Dave, go ahead.
I think it's important to note that the Realtors Association, whoever, that first thing, it was important to see that, they supported it, makes me feel better about that.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Any other? I, I think, actually, you know, Jared and his office has done a lot of work on this, and, you know, it's gone through City Planning Commission a couple times, but I really think what you're getting is is a lot better product because of that, too, so I think, you know, that that creates kudos for all of us to make sure that we have something that that makes sense for our community. So, again, second reading will be, oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to thank all the council members, again, who that came forward to discuss and express your concerns, because, again, as the mayor said, that is what helps us get to a better project, product, and helps us get to a product that's easily more understood once it actually gets to this floor, so. Thank you for everyone's effort, I appreciate it.
And again, I, if people that don't understand how the city of Wauwaka does this, we have, when we have ordinance, it's changed, and some other things, too, we do a first and a second reading, and the first reading, we just basically talk about it at that first meeting, and give the opportunity for the public to comment on that, and then, at the next meeting after that, which, again, will be on April third, then the council, if they choose, they will have the opportunity, which is called the second reading, to vote on that, that ordinance change, and that's exactly what's going to be happening here. Okay? Any further discussion on this tonight? All right, let's go to Certified Survey Map at one oh three six Townsend Road for William and Marina Vetter. Jared, you're still up here.
Thank you very much, Mayor. The Certified Survey Map can be found on page one oh nine of your packets, this is out on Townsend Road, background of this property, when Townsend Road was redirected or created, it ended up splitting this property, now, when it ended up splitting the property, an official split with two proper legal descriptions was never created. The property owner did approach the city, they were looking to start a business on Lot Two that you'll see on this map, so on the west side of Townsend Road, as needing to do that, we did notify them that they do need to officially split the parcel, so that it has two separate parcel numbers, two separate addresses, and that business can be properly started, so this is what they are doing, it is a, it is a cleanup item, we do have a few other properties throughout the city that are like this, it's really just one of those items that we we deal with and as they come up. So the lot to the west is zoned industrial, I two, and the lot to the right, Lot One, that has their home on it, is zoned agricultural, so neither of the zoning districts are changing, they're staying exactly how they have been, they're just being officially split with the Certified Survey Map. Staff recommends approval and would be looking for, Plan Commission recommends approval as well, and we'd be looking for approval tonight.
All right, any questions? Anybody like to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Velicker, that we approve of Certified Survey Map for ten thirty-six Townsend Road. Any discussion? Barbara Calderol?
Henry Velicker?
Hi.
Paul Hagan?
Hi.
Paul Mayo?
Hi.
Dave Peterson?
Hi.
Scott Porczatsky?
Hi.
Eric Olson?
Hi.
Colin Dijkstra?
Hi.
Corey Nagel?
Hi.
Dimitri Martin?
Hi.
Nine eyes, motion carried.
All right, thanks, Jared. Next up, Nels Rasmussen Park, Laura, that's you.
Thanks, Mayor. So as a background, the Wauwaka Garden Club has been working in Nels Rasmussen Park since before nineteen seventy-three, and the person that started it, last name Nels Rasmussen, or his name was Nels Rasmussen, if anybody knows Bob, Bob Telfer, who's a part of this garden club, he is the third generation, that was his grandfather. So they started, as mentioned, around seventy-three in Nels Rasmussen Park, working on that park, and then they moved west to Wauwaka River Falls Park, which is right up against the the river on Water, or right up against, yeah, the river on Water Street, they moved there in twenty sixteen, in twenty seventeen, this group moved into Boyer Park, and in twenty eighteen, they started working in South Park, so this is a really prolific group who does a lot of beautiful work for our city, and it has come to our attention that they would really appreciate having a shed at Nels Rasmussen Park, they are not getting much younger, and it's difficult for them to carry their tools and their and their equipment up and down that hill, and so as you can see on page one eleven, they would like to have us install a shed pretty far north in Nels Rasmussen Park, it's not very visible from the roadway, but we wanted to bring it to City Council so that you are aware of this and to get your approval. Luckily, our capital improvement plan that we were putting in the roof at Riverside Park came in under budget, so we had ten thousand dollars set aside for that project, and between the roof and a new bathroom door, we spent a total of four thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars, which leaves us with five thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars that we could dedicate to providing this shed as a thank you for all of the wonderful work that the Wauwaka Garden Club does for our local parks. So with your approval, we, we've already gotten the Parks and Rec approval, Parks and Rec Board approval, but we would like for your, for your approval tonight, so we can move forward with building that shed when the Parks Crew has time within their other busy schedule.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mayo, second by Nagel, that we approve of the shed at Nels Rasmussen Park. Any discussion? Barbara Calderol?
Henry Velicker?
Hi.
Paul Hagan?
Hi.
Paul Mayo?
Hi.
Dave Peterson?
Hi.
Scott Porczatsky?
Hi.
Eric Olson?
Hi.
Colin Dijkstra?
Hi.
Corey Nagel?
Hi.
Dimitri Martin?
Hi.
Nine eyes, motion carried.
All right, you're still up, looks like we're getting a new pickup truck here.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. As Justin says, let's talk trucks, so our park replacement plan is calling for a replacement of truck four eleven, which is a two thousand and three GMC twenty-five hundred, and you can see a photo of that on page one fifteen, it is the oldest truck in our fleet with fifty-one thousand four hundred and fifty miles. We used the pricing comparison with Ewald Ford, which, in case you have forgotten, Justin brought this forward last time he presented, but it is the state purchasing contract, so that they can bring us what would be potentially the lowest. so that they can bring us what would be potentially the lowest bid. And their comparable price was forty-seven thousand two hundred and seventy-five for a three-quarter ton, four-by-four, basic work truck. Josh went to Neville Motors and Peterson Motors, or Peterson Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram, and asked them for their prices. And Peterson came in below Ewald Ford. So we are looking to move forward with your approval for moving with Peterson. And the reason why we're excited about this is because Peterson has done a lot of really great fundraising efforts for us and the work that we've done, and so we're excited to kind of give back to them.
All right, so in that price, Laura, is the forty-six nine eighty-five fifty, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
Anybody have any questions? Motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Dykstra, second by Hagan, that we approve of the purchase of a new Parks Superintendent Pickup Truck from Peterson Chrysler Dodge, whatever.
Jeep.
Jeep.
Ram.
For an amount not to exceed forty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty cents. Any discussion? Barbara Calderon?
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Next up, just communications recommendations of the mayor. Don't forget, again, elections are on April second, Tuesday, April second. So we cannot hold a city council meeting that night. So that meeting will be moved to Wednesday, April third, the day after. And that will start at six o'clock. City Planning Commission will still have their meeting because they do hold their meeting on the first Wednesday of the month. But they'll just move it up, they'll start at four-thirty and they'll be done before six o'clock. Hi, Jared?
You got it.
All right. Any other comments for tonight?
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Hagan?
Second.
Second by Olson, that we adjourn to our next regular scheduled meeting, which has been rescheduled to April third. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried, we're adjourned at seven-thirty-four P.M. Have a great night, everybody.